...thinking of the summer months, January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, meeting of the Pearl L. Crawford Memorial Library in Lord of Trustees. With us this evening, we have member Adriana Buda, we have member Joyce Narzinski, I thought I pronounced it nearly correctly, Vice Chair Ben Craver, Library Director Drusilla Carter, and member Ed Bazinett. And with a little bit of electronic magic, we will have joining us remotely, member Kathy Sand...
Strom.
Strom, excuse me. I don't know if she... Kathy, are you here? Did you get that miscue yet?
Not yet.
Okay, well, let's cross our fingers and hope. Let's start with the pledge allegiance, if we may.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One addition to that list, I would add our videographer Amanda, who's taking care of all of the magic. Our first agenda item is review of meeting minutes for October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Do you want to have any thoughts with regards to those meeting minutes? Hopefully, you've had a chance to review them.
Read them online. If you have questions on either one, I'll make a motion to accept.
Do we have a...
Do you want...
You have a question?
No, I just, I want to thank Lisa for doing them. She puts us all to shame. Those wonderful meeting minutes, like, they're wonderful. But I think the only question I ask is, should we list who's not present at the meeting?
That should be...
That's the only thing, like, it doesn't say who was absent.
With regards to the twenty-second, you mean?
Yes, because Adriana and I were not present. Should it look... I mean, in the past, we have, and I just think we should list who's not present.
All right. Well, we could certainly have that added in. At this point, I don't know that the... I think we've noted that already, so we're aware if he wasn't here. Do you want it to go back to Ms. Berg and ask her to...
Yeah.
...modify that and change it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, with the boards, I think it should be listed. They should be accurate.
Okay. And we have a motion. Do we have a... We have a suggestion in terms of change, too?
Motion with the...
No.
Motion with the change.
All right. Second to that motion?
Second.
Second. And this will be to accept the meeting minutes for both the twenty-fifth and November twenty-second.
Correct.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And...
Oh, we have to roll call.
Oh, yes, we do. Yeah, excuse me. Matter of fact, we have to roll call to accept her into the meeting, although she doesn't seem to be here at this point. But let's do that first of all.
Sit in the waiting room.
Anyone care to make a motion to allow remote access?
I'll make a motion that we allow remote access with Kathy Sandstrom this evening.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, by roll.
Ed Bazinett?
Aye.
Ben Craver?
Ben Craver, aye.
Joyce Narzinski, aye.
Adriana, aye.
Kathy?
No.
Richard Clark, aye. Okay, the motion carries. Then, back to the motion with regards to the meeting minutes. Again, roll call.
Aye.
Aye, Ed Bazinett, aye.
Ben Craver, aye.
Joyce Narzinski, aye.
Adriana Buda, aye.
Kathy? Not with us, I guess, yet. Richard Clark, aye. Okay, so the motion carries. We have both meeting minutes approved. And to Joyce's point, and I'm glad you made that, the minutes for...
Wonderful.
...November twenty-second were much more inclusive than I think anyone could have hoped for, and...
Yeah, better than I could have ever written.
Thank you, Lisa Berg, your assessor and our scribe. At some point, we may want to consider some sort of compensation for going forward. I don't know what that might look like, but...
Already? Yeah. I think we are.
I told her she would be when I spoke to her.
Yes, so what has...
We have.
We always have in the past.
We always have, but she does other committees gratis. So, it's like I said, but you do not work for the library.
All right.
What has occurred in the...
What's the policy?
What has occurred in the past, as when Michelle Jervis was our clerk...
Right.
Is that usually it's quarterly, because it's not that many hours, but could be monthly. I'll check with her when I see her this week. She will give me a total of how many hours she spent, and then that comes out of... It's paid to her, but from our budget.
Okay.
So, it gets added to payroll. Like I said, Michelle used to do it quarterly, but I'll check with Lisa and see.
All right. Well, that certainly seems appropriate. I wasn't aware of that. Thank you. Okay, moving along, we have the director's report, programs, budget, and facility report.
So, we have a lot of programs coming up, obviously. We just added a couple of more programs today, actually. So, as always, check the calendar for the things that are coming up. Quite a few of our things that require registration are full. Our arthropod petting zoo, if you want to come pet a bug, you will have to be on the waiting list, because unfortunately, that's full. Well, I guess I should say fortunately, because it means it's a popular program.
Can you move a microphone closer to you? Only because you're wearing the mask, it's very hard to hear you, and I think patrons won't be able to hear you...
Sorry.
...recording.
So, there are a lot of, a lot of good things coming up. There's quite a variety coming up. We just added a couple more things today for kids, so keep an eye on the online calendar, as always. Budget, we are in good shape, as always. We're right at fifty percent, which is just about where we should be, since we're fifty percent through the year.
I did have a question, if I may, with regards to the budget. It looks like we still have some state aid dating back to two thousand and eighteen.
Yes.
Is there some way we can clear that or get that off the books, or is that there forever?
Until I find something that pays fifty-seven, that costs fifty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents to take out of it, yes.
When you did the sign?
Mm-hmm.
That didn't wipe it out?
No, I took it out of one of the ones that had a larger thing. I was gonna... I keep an eye out for something that's in about the right ballpark.
I'm assuming in the past, we've just gone from the, the oldest, and just kept wiping it out in the past. I mean, I'd suggest we do that, just so it doesn't look like we're just hoarding money back there.
Is there a reason, like, you have to have something under that amount? Is that why?
No, it's just it's easier for bookkeeping purposes, if I can fit it all into one line item, so...
I think it highly unlikely we'll find anything with fifty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents exactly on the money.
But, I mean, we do have, we have, we may have some things coming up that I can use that from.
Does that go away at some point?
No.
I mean, we're five years in now.
Absolutely not. That is ours, as long as...
Forever.
Yep. There are libraries that, talking to other libraries in our central mass directors' group, there are libraries that have it going back seven or eight years, that they're accumulating it for a specific purpose, and they have not spent.
And we actually did that during our building project. We stockpiled, thinking we would have overages, you know, building project. You're gonna need money after it's open, there's gonna be something. So, we kind of stockpiled it for years, as you say, and then we spent it.
Well, okay. All right. Do you have anything further? I'm sorry if we interrupt you.
No, I don't think so. As I say, so that's budget. Like I said, we're at fifty percent, and we're at fifty percent and a pinch through the year, so we're good. When it comes to facility report, as you'll notice in our, in my director's report, we got a bunch of stuff that's outstanding, crossed off the list last month. We have a new light pole. We have the new team room furniture donated by Ellen Rude in memory of Bill Fife. Our alarm system has been upgraded to wireless, which, you know, we signed that we wanted that to happen a really long time ago, when they finally got the parts in. So, yeah, so at the moment, everything in the building is doing what it's supposed to do.
All righty.
The alarm that I got this week, well...
That, they are coming back tomorrow, because, so that's actually, they think that signals got crossed, so because we switched from a landline to a wireless thing, they think the tech's coming back tomorrow to check, and his department or head or whoever, Joel, who I talked to, I know his name, was working with the alarm center people to be like, no, no, you should not be getting a wired phone line test anymore, because they don't use that anymore.
Yeah, I knew when I got it, I was like, it's gotta be that crossover.
But, yeah, that's what, that's what he thinks it is, but he thinks, you know, we haven't gotten anything in, you know, a couple days, so we think we're good, but he's sending the tech out tomorrow just to double-check that that is, everything's working.
My assumption is with the flagpole and the doors, those will have to be, you know, this spring, as the weather's again...
Yes, that, that the weather has to cooperate for both of those, so those are both on.
Someone related to the weather issue, you had the question about a generator at the last meeting, and...
We have...
Starts from the fire chief, perhaps?
Well, I have not seen him. We have our department heads meeting on, at the last week of the month, and so I will talk to him and John Ruda when I have them both in one place, and, and can let them know that, I mean, I have multiple times in the past few years, reminded them that the library is the emergency backup town hall.
So, can I ask that you, I know you're gonna see them at the department head meeting, and that's great, you know, thank you, but I would like you to create a paper trail...
Okay.
...that you've notified them, and like, you know what I mean?
All right, I'll send out an email tomorrow.
So that there's a paper trail that you have, and then you can talk to them at that meeting about it?
Sure.
That gives them a little heads up that it's gonna be brought up, but it's also creating a paper trail.
And it puts dates with this, too. It helps to keep things in perspective and help them.
I'll send them an email tomorrow.
Thank you.
And the sign, the folks for the sign, they haven't come back, that I've noticed recently, anyway.
They were there last week, just before they submitted the invoice.
All right. Have they finished the project?
They should have.
All right. There was cleaning of the sign. I spoke to them, and they were gonna do that. Is that a spring thing?
I think that's a spring thing, from talking, from talking to Joel at Graphics Unlimited, because you don't wanna, you know...
We're gonna be looking real good in the spring.
[laughing]
So, we don't look forward to it.
And on the sign, when we use too small of a font...
Yeah, Lita...
It's a big blur.
Yeah, Lita and I have, it's a learning curve.
That's what I see.
Because it's a different size, it's a different size display. It's longer and shorter, and so there were a couple of things that we formatted for the old sign, and so we know going forward that we just have to format slightly differently.
Thank you, because somebody praised us for having it, but said, but you can't read it.
We didn't, I didn't realize that if I uploaded something formatted for the old sign, that it was going to stretch it to fit. So, that's part of the problem, is that, that we assumed that it would plonk it in the middle, you know, and leave the formatting, and it doesn't. So, like I said, we know going forward.
Learning curve.
Yeah, exactly. And before we lose the door, did, were you able to get a hold of Ernie Moss, and did he respond?
I called him and didn't get an answer, but I decided I wasn't gonna leave a voicemail, because first of all, that was right at New Year's, just like two days before New Year's, and it's a project that needs to happen, and I think in the spring, anyway. So, it's on my agenda to call him in another week or two, when maybe we will all have figured out that it's twenty twenty-three.
What door is it?
The two big front doors, the wooden doors.
Just finishing, just keeping them up.
Yeah.
Maintenance.
Other thing is that we had an ADA audit in town that long ago. Have you seen any results with the doors to the library? Not yet.
No, have not heard anything, and since the application the town is making is to a federal grant process, experience tells me you're looking at about six months before. You even hear whether...
Of what year?
Good point.
Should be, I mean, the, my understanding is the application was submitted in the fall of two thousand twenty-two, so we're looking at sometime this spring.
This spring is gonna be wonderful!
Well, experience, experience working with federal grants tells me that what you get is a, yes, you're qualified, not a, you're qualified and here's your money. It's, it's you're qualified, you've made it through that round.
Fill out some more paperwork.
Yes, exactly. So, at some point, but the town, the town is doing, Bill's doing his thing, the, the grant application has been submitted, and since it covers all town departments, once, you know, it'll depend on what, what is funded through the grant and what, you know, each department gets out of it, so...
Did you, was there, I think you mentioned at least there was one special, specific concern with regards to the library. Was it just that one issue that we had?
We had several small ones. The fact that the microwave in the staff workroom is, is mounted under a cabinet instead of on the countertop, which my response is if one of us needed it to be accessible, we'd just unmount it and put it on the countertop. It was a number of things like that.
Did they accept that explanation, or...
They haven't asked. They, they gave us the things and said...
There's been no feedback.
Yeah, but, you know, I said a number of things that they suggested, particularly in the, it's one thing out in the public areas, but in the staff workroom, that only staff access. There are things that if we had someone who was in need of that accommodation, we would obviously make it. It was, the book drop was the big one, and then the fact that all of the grab bars in all of the bathrooms are an inch too high. So, and then there were one or two other things related to signage, which should be fairly minor fixes. I mean, the book drop, that, that's a permanent fixture that... Yeah, and the way the, as I had to explain, the, the estimate from the ADA folks who came in and did the audit was, it'll cost about three hundred to four hundred dollars to move it, and I had to take pictures and show to Bill and John Ruda that it's an integrated unit with a chute that comes into the...
Yeah.
...the book bins, and if you drop the outside piece, the amount that they are calling for, the books won't go into the book bins, because they'll, so we have to replace the whole unit, and it is wired in, because it has the light on it, so it's not a simple, just cut a slot.
And I guess my biggest issue with that is that the ADA went through the building when it was...
Yeah.
Built.
Yeah, I did...
And nothing's changed!
I did say to Bill that I, I had some questions, because we are, you know, well, except for the fire department, we are in new, the newest building, and if, if this was okay then, you know, but...
The only thing that may change is the regulation or the, whatever ruling they've come down with.
But anyhow, so we have not, we have not heard anything, and I did make sure...
Hopefully, we'll be grandfathered in.
I did make sure that Bill was aware of the cost of a new book drop unit that was six inches lower.
One other question with regards to facilities. We were talking about some reupholstering possibility of, and have we had any progress on that?
I am waiting for estimates. It seems to be, it's actually been three or four email threads among directors. Seems like a lot of people are wanting to reupholster their furniture at this point, and so there's just a backlog for...
Because so many people have been home for the past three...
But, so there's a backlog on estimates, and I have, I've spoken to both Tucker Interiors, who did the furniture we have, and Mass Corps, which is the Department of Corrections. There is some question about Mass Corps because of the pay or lack thereof that they provide to inmates, and whether that is compatible with some of the values of the library community, so they, we are, there's a, a big discussion about it using...
I think I understand.
So, prison inmates are paid something like fifty cents an hour, and the, the thing is that that is a, there's a lot of discussion about whether that is an exploitative wage, because they don't have any choice, you know, they have to take the job that they're given. So, there's, there's been quite a bit of discussion about that, but either way, I'm still waiting to hear back from the gentleman.
But it's probably their choice to be in the program, right? Like, they choose...
Well, if they wanna have money to spend in the prison canteen, as it's called, to buy, like, Tylenol or whatever, they have to earn money through the prison system.
Yeah, so this is probably something that they actually want to do, regardless of how much they get paid.
I don't think they just assigned, you're gonna be an upholsterer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's how it goes, but...
And who's allowed to be explo, do the exploitation, and who's not allowed? Because we're a town, we cannot. But you, as a private citizen, you can go and do it.
My thought would be that maybe we'd look for a plan B here, depending on how long it takes them to answer.
Well, she's going with Tucker.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I also have a thing in for Tucker, who's used before, so...
All right.
But, yeah, it just seems to be a matter of waiting, and we're not the only library that's waiting for their estimates for various things.
Upholsterers, like, just upholster, like, we used to have an upholsterer, I don't think, I don't think there is, yeah, they're not in business anymore.
I think capable, from what I see on the roadway, in terms of furniture that's apparently free and available, it looks like the tendency is to throw things away, and reupholstering, like, repairing shoes has apparently gone the way of the slide rule.
Yeah.
One other thing, we did not get passage, the last town meeting with regards to the carpeting. My thought, frankly, and I'll share this with you, is that we may look at an area that we think is most in need of, and try to come up with a number for that, as opposed to trying to go back for the whole enchilada, if you will.
And I think we need to invite in whoever makes that decision, that it gets to the, to the floor with a recommendation, so they can see it.
Well, that would be the FAA, probably.
I think they, we gotta invite those folk in, and say, come see this.
The FAA is very much interested in pickup trucks. Carpeting seems to be something that keeps alarms, like...
We can host the meeting.
Let's look over who the members are, and see who we know, and say, on our own.
And what I did have, I did...
Well, their, their meetings will be posted on the town website, so we certainly can attend, and I do think they have options or opportunity for people to speak.
You'd go to a meeting and invite them to come?
I had, one of them, one of the members did come to the library before the last vote, and I showed her, you know, pointed out the damage, and was like, you know, this, this carpeting is falling apart, you know, and she was, I think, a bit surprised by some of the damage and some of the, like, that it wasn't just one area that they're... You know, and she was, I think, a bit surprised by some of the damage and some of the, like, that it wasn't just one area that there, areas throughout the building, but maybe if all of them came to see it.
I think I like your idea though, would it, do you think it would pass to select the most damaged area and change to the carpeting that Dracilla had recommended, those carpet squares, and start working in that direction? And doing the most damaged area, it would be a smaller cost.
If we can't get the whole pie of pieces, at least a thought anyway. I think the number was one that they struggled with a bit.
Uh, yes, yep.
Uh, the sense of the board then to try and lobby the FAA members when opportunity presents itself, either at their meetings or personally?
Make them aware. I, I wouldn't call it lobbying, but we could.
Okay, awareness.
Make them aware, because otherwise it's just something on a sheet, you know.
Well, I wonder about attending a meeting and even, like, you, you do attend the meetings with the selectmen, like, and showing pictures.
Yeah, well, I did, I sent them pictures. You know, I had emailed them pictures, but like, here's, here's.
So, and they still, they still didn't pass it.
And we were requesting everything that is carpeted now to be replaced.
Yes.
And so we do have different areas that we could easily, as you say.
Yes.
Pick a spot and do this, and then do that, and do this.
And I liked Dracilla's idea of the carpet squares, because that's much easier to replace than carpeting the whole thing.
And they also, I, well, having had them in buildings, the, the squares are individually bound, so they don't fray. Like, part of the issues we're having is that the broadloom carpeting along seams is fraying. The tiles don't do that, so.
I'm trying to remember if someone has memory or recollection of what happened at town meeting. Was it passed over? Or was it voted down?
It came up for a vote.
It came up for a vote, it was voted down, okay. Uh, well, then we need to.
The recommendation was to vote.
Yeah, the recommendation of the.
We need, within the community, within the town of Dudley, enough people who are going to vote in favor of it. Because regardless of whatever recommendation, it's still up to those who are attendants at the town meeting to decide whether it passes or not. So we need to broaden the effort, if you will, of the educational aspect of that, not only FAA members, but the town in large.
I think going forward that that might be a better way.
Because there were articles, as I recall from the planning board, that were approved, if you will, or put forward and recommended, and they would vote it down. So it's not just the recommendation alone that decides the issue. Okay. Any further questions regarding facility reports, programs, budget, and we're going to try to clear out 2018 going forward? Directors, next item we have is directors' draft collection development policy. I see nothing here right now for the record that Kathy has joined us in any way, shape, or form. So I'm thinking that that's not going to happen this evening. And then you got anything over there indicating, no, not knocking on the door. All right. All righty. Uh, this was something, this, uh, policy or proposed policy, collection development policy, is something that the director presented at the last meeting. We weren't a full board at that time. We, uh, table that. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to take a look at this. Perhaps Dracilla, you could present it again as you did last time perhaps, and bring us up to speed.
So in discussion with the Mass Board of Library Commissioners at one of their, you know, sort of directors chats, I guess you'd call them. They mentioned that, um, they knew of a number of libraries that did not have the collection development policy, and in particular, did not have a policy in place for dealing with challenges to materials. And libraries are seeing a lot more challenges to materials, um, in the past year or two. And they strongly recommend that you should have something in place, that if somebody does present a challenge to material, you're not going, um, okay, let me figure out what to do about this. So this is, um, as you may know, MBLC maintains a selection of what they consider good policies or, or, you know, good examples of certain policies. And so this is, um, essentially plagiarized from, from one of those.
Do you have an extra copy over there? That's something I didn't, I don't know.
Do you need one, Adrian?
Yes.
We're good, thank you.
Um, and I did, you know, again, asked, asked other directors if they had, uh, the challenge forms that they felt had worked particularly well, and kind of took that into account, um, when drafting this one.
I think we're going to take a minute or two to review this. Do you have a copy of it?
I have, but I, I reviewed it in my hand.
So then this is the proposal, and you're asking for the board's approval to include that in library policies.
So you're asking that if someone had, uh, someone would fill this out, a patron would fill this out, and then what's, what's the process?
So it would then be given to me.
Yep.
Um, and then, um, generally, it is, it is the library director who makes a decision, but then that decision can be appealed to the board, if somebody feels that that decision is unreasonable.
So do you feel that there should be a time limit and maybe it's something that, um, you'll make it within forty-five days, within that forty-five days, we would have another trustee meeting. Is this something you could present to the board at that time?
I mean, I could, but I feel like in that case, I should just say that they'll be reviewed by the board instead of saying that they'll be reviewed by the director, um, which is.
I hate to put it all on you and.
But I mean, that is, that is, like I said, I'm copying this from, from other policies. And the, the general thing is the director makes the decision, and then if there's an appeal, then it goes to the board.
What would be the criteria? Like, how do you make that decision?
Um, well, so as it does appear, selection of materials is based on usefulness, quality, popularity, authority of presentation, presentation of varying views, cost, and availability of materials from other sources. Materials are selected on the basis of the work as a whole and are not excluded because of isolated passages or frankness of expression. No book or library material shall be excluded because of race, nationality, or the political or social views of the author. So if someone is saying, I'm challenging this because there is one sentence that I object to, we can say, well, our, our collection development policy says that we consider the work as whole, not an isolated sentence. And if someone said, well, I don't agree with the, you know, the views presented in this, that, that they have a political view or a social view, that we can say, well, we do not discriminate based on that. That it is, you know, we have, we have said that we, we, you know, try to include a broad range of topics of interest and a broad range of views.
I have a question about, um, I mean, I think this is good, it's great, but it's, it might be a little vague in some aspects, like, you can, you can put a book in a category, or if you can, you can decide not to, you know? Like, it's a little bit vague. I have a question specifically about how do we start, decide if children are young or old enough to be exposed to certain materials?
So the books in, we do not make the decision about what children can access. That is up to the parent. That is the parent's responsibility. Where we shelve books is dependent upon, they're very, um, careful guidelines. When we purchase some material, it says intended for grades, whatever, intended for ages, whatever. And that is how we shelve things, generally speaking. There are one or two things that we have made the decision should not be in, for example, the young adult section. It should be in the adult section. But that is part of the selection process, is looking at the age range that materials are recommended for. But as to whether we decide whether your child can access the material, we don't. That is up to you.
So you're saying you've made that decision though?
Yeah, we've, we've had stuff come in that, we've had stuff come in that was, you know, billed as young adult, and we've decided to put it in adult instead.
So what criteria did you use or rubrics did you use to make that decision?
In that case, it was some graphic sexual scenes that we decided, you know, perhaps should be moved to where teenagers can access it, but where it is not specifically in, you know, where maybe older teenagers can access it, but it's not specifically in the younger teenager.
I think the policy has, as long as I've been involved or known of the library here at Dudley and elsewhere, the library's always made some, kind of, somewhere there's a line where the children's section exists, and then there's the young adults, and then there's the adults. So that's, that's been a tradition within all libraries, I suspect, probably from day one.
Yeah, and again, it's part of what, what.
If you're saying that it comes and it's rated for that age.
You know, what we, what we purchase, you know, certainly for children, um, children's materials tell us what the recommended age is.
What happens if you don't have a range? Because some books don't have a range.
Uh, then that is up to the judgment. So for children's materials, that is up to the judgment of the children's librarian, which is why we have the graduate degrees that we do, that in part gives us the skills to do that.
Okay, the, the reason why I'm asking this is because now the LGBTQ, um, community is stronger and stronger, and we have some books in, in our children's area. And I think some parents might want to introduce that to their children, but some parents don't really. So how do we navigate that?
In that case, that's up to the parent. I mean, it's up to the parent what their child checks out. We, we don't say, you must check this book out. There's all kinds of books in the library that I personally don't want to read, so I just don't. So if there's a material that you don't want your child to read, you don't check it out for them. That is, that is apparent, that is not the library's responsibility, that is, that is the parent's responsibility.
It is, but if it's, you know, if it's a book that has a lot of pictures and it's available and the children want it, it's, it's harder, you know? If it's somewhere on the shelf and the, the parent can decide, okay, I'm going to check this out for my, for my child because I want to introduce him to all these concepts, is one thing. But if it's in the children's area with all the other picture books, if you have LGBTQ, then I think that's a little bit different.
I, no, I mean, no, that's, that is, it is the responsibility of the parent. And if a book is intended for a child who's maybe four to six years old, then that is the, that is where it goes.
That's why I asked, what do we do if there's no range? Because on some books, there is no range. I, I check them all the time, and it doesn't say.
It may not say it in the book, but it does in the materials that we get when we do a selection process. We, we work with a different, you know, we're not looking at the book itself, we're looking at the information that the publisher provides.
So could a parent make that request that it is put into a different range?
They could, and we would consider it, but, um, you know, like I said, the, if it's, if it's a picture book, for example, it, you know, that goes back to the, we, we don't exclude items because of the social views or the political views. They, they go, you know, where the audience of their intent.
But it's not social or political, that's more of a sexual nature. It's not, it's not political.
I mean, none of those, none of those books are graphically illustrating, you know, sexual intercourse in any way. They're simply saying that those people of different orientations exist.
Sounds good.
I do have a question. This is, um, because of isolated passages, uh, isn't it possible that it could be a passage that is so egregious that that book should not find its way to the shelf? And I don't know what, uh, isolated is a little vague too. You have a text of six hundred pages, something on page thirty-nine, and then again on five ninety-eight.
Oh, that has, and that has been reasoned for people in other libraries, and in fact, has happened to me, to challenge a book. It is a six hundred page book, and on page fifty-eight, there is a sentence that I do not agree with.
Okay.
And.
But I, I think there, there is the possibility that there, whatever isolated passages there is, could theoretically, at least, I can't think of a specific right now, but possibly be just so outrageously ridiculous and offensive that it, it in, of itself would ban the book, or would get the book off the shelf.
I mean, in that case, like I said, if someone comes across that, someone is welcome to submit a challenge. Thing is that, in my experience, um, for example, a young adult book, a young adult book was challenged at my last library because a parent objected to one sentence that referred to, um, French kissing and making out with a boy. Didn't object to anything else, it was that one sentence in a, in an otherwise, you know, book that she thought was perfectly fine, and it was, well, you know, I can't, I am not going to say, well, this book has absolutely no merit, because it has one sentence that you disagree with. You know, our job is to provide materials for everyone.
You had mentioned, I recall, uh, this policy or similar policy had been adopted by some overwhelming percentage of libraries in Massachusetts.
Most libraries in Massachusetts now have one.
Well, uh, any further questions from the board?
I would just ask that if that ever does come to happen, that it's presented to the board, that we're made aware.
I, I would ask that, that the chair and co-chair be notified, uh, you know, maybe not twenty minutes after, but at some point, reasonable short time afterwards, or get, maybe get our hands on a copy and take a look at it ourselves. We need to do a little more reading anyway, don't we?
Of that nature.
Of that nature. Well, we don't know what nature that may be. It may have nothing to do with nature, in fact, as it comes afterwards.
A little too excited to do this.
Yes, well, uh, so at this point though, what is the board's pleasure be? We don't have a policy, it's, it's such anything right now.
Okay, so this would be something, it's not replacing anything, this would be a.
I guess that just something, something would come to the board if a, if a request has been made, that the board is made aware of that. Can be added, that's all, just so we're aware that there's been a discussion, and Dracilla's, you know, taking it under advisement.
All right, can we?
So are you adding a?
I would add, I would add it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would add it.
It could be right at the very end. All requests will be reviewed by the library director, will make a decision within forty-five days after informing the board.
The board of trustees will be advised at a, you know, reasonable amount of time or something to that effect. All right, again, I would ask what the board's pleasure might be, if we want to take action on this.
I would say we would wait until next month till we present though.
The final form?
Yeah.
Maybe Kathy will be here since.
All right, that, that would be.
That's why I pushed it off last time.
Yeah.
If you were here.
So, uh, that seems to be the sense of the board then. We're going to carry this over to the next meeting table.
February.
Thank you. Moving along, we have summer Saturday planning, one of my favorites.
Um, we hope to have, uh, our new staff member in place in February. We're currently on a hold with paperwork because Michelle is out of town until next week.
Very out of town, Costa Rica in fact.
But we have, uh, I, I think she's going to be a really good addition, um, to the, to the library staff. Uh, she works currently in a CW Mars library, so she knows the, the software and so on.
Wonderful.
Short learning curve.
And the Saturday thing is not conserved for her, is that something?
No, and all of the candidates were told that, that ours would require regular Saturdays, so.
What's the mechanism here? Uh, we recommend to Mr. Ruda that she goes on the payroll at some point in town as they interface.
I've already spoken to John Ruda and said that, you know, the board had directed me to hire the person. This is the candidate I want. She does her, her background check and her, and physical and contingent upon that. She starts. We're good to go.
Do you need any action from us this evening? Okay, good, thank you.
So we'll have a candidate, so are we looking at a date?
Um, I'm not sure. It's going to depend on how long it takes to get the background check and everything back. But as I said, I'm hoping in February to have her start.
Then this is going to constitute opening on Saturdays.
Hopefully it will get us open on Saturdays through the year.
Right, and I think at that point, we need to reconsider Saturday's closings. We've had a lot of Saturday closings when there's a long weekend, and I'm not sure how long that's been in play, and if we want to do that for all of the.
That's a good point, and as we're at the start of the year, it's a good idea to take a look at the calendar as a whole anyway.
Because we'll have that person, and it would be nice.
Good, I, I kind of like the idea of having the library open throughout the year as opposed to reading that. It's almost as bad as the post office, you know, for this month and that month.
I'm always there when they're closed, yes, always.
You and I both, I'm afraid, but, uh, yeah, I'll take that little bit of confusion out of people's minds hopefully. All right, now this is something I think one of us can speak to here, theme of the month idea.
Yes.
And, uh, this, we passed over last month, and, uh, we wanted you to have full opportunity to present this thought as, as yours.
It's not a real, real presentation, it's just an idea.
All right, well, ideas are good.
I was thinking that, um, kids might be interested in a monthly theme. If we had something like maybe camping, or outer space, or the human body, and we can change everything once a month, and we can decorate, some kids would, I think, would be more interested to see what's going to happen next month, so they would come more often.
Is Kathy there?
Hello Kathy? Hello Kathy?
No, it's probably gone the 45 minutes.
Oh.
Signed out, yeah.
Um, so some kids would be interested in the actual theme. Um, and I've seen this done in, in other libraries and they, you know, they just set up a tent for camping and they buy some toys that look like, uh, fire is burning and people are reading around the fire or they're making smores or something like that. It's, I think it's pretty easy and not extremely expensive.
Um, I would say that, I mean, I, you'd need to speak to Lita, the children's librarian. Set up a meeting, talk to her about it and give her your idea.
Okay.
And it's, it's, I mean, that's her department, so.
What is something that can be done?
Across the whole library or just the children's?
No, 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 just the children's space, the children's area.
Yeah, no, that's, that's her department, so I, I leave that to her.
Okay.
Cause that's her, that's her area of expertise, so.
But does that mean that it's actually gonna happen or does it mean that I'm gonna talk with her?
You talk with her and, um, she will take it under advisement. I mean, she has her, her themes and her programs planned for, I mean, I know at this point out until September. But if it's something that she feels she can incorporate, um, with everything else she does, then I'm sure she'll do it. And if not, then, you know, but certainly talk to her and, uh.
I, I don't, I mean, I don't see a lot of reasons why it wouldn't be possible because, um, it's not expensive. It's something that everyone who works at the library can do. It's very, very, it's just maybe to just decorate everyone like.
Yeah, it's like I said, talk, talk to Lita because that is, that is her department. And I, um, you know, for a suggestion to come to the board is fine, but I am, I don't dictate what she does in her department.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry. Uh, Kathy, are you with us now? Hello?
She might have her microphone off.
Are we there? Are we broadcasting on AM and FM or is it my home? Hello?
Kathy, if you can figure out a way that we could hear you. We're not hearing you at all. If you're hearing us, we're not hearing you. So play, play with your computer and just scream at us if it gets something.
It says, it's gonna, I can't read.
I can't. It's too small, too fine a print for me.
All right.
I don't know. She's left the meeting.
For anybody that's watching the video, we're trying to, uh, work the magic again and, uh, hopefully our remote access member is with us at this point. Fingers crossed.
She's in, there's.
She's in?
She might not have her microphone on then.
Yeah, you have to, that mute thing, you have to, the microphone. Hello? Well, I'm glad to assume that she can hear us even if we can't hear her at this point. Uh, I, that thought that you might present it, you know, the one with camping, uh, that doesn't need to be restricted to the children's area. I mean, that can be brought out into the library as a whole, some extent.
We do thematic displays in the adult department. One of our staff members takes that on brand.
Oh!
So, um, that, that is, you know, she has her theme set for the, the year.
She can't see us. What she's seeing is the picture in the box.
For those on, who might be watching the video, we do have a miracle that has just occurred. We have a, uh, Kathy Sandstrom has been able to join us apparently. Kathy, did you hear us?
Nope.
She has to turn on her microphone.
Well, we have visual, uh, presence, but maybe not audio as of yet. I think we're gonna continue with the assumption that Kathy is hearing us at least and able to make some contact. This is all bewildering. Okay, all right. Uh, Adriana, did you have anything further? You, you wanted to bring up, you're gonna go forward with contacting Lita?
Yes, and I will come back with maybe some ideas.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure what she's able to do, if she has everything that she needs or she would need to purchase something.
And if she does, she comes to me. That's a, that's a, um, so when it comes to setting programming and so on, that is, that is um, something that she and I do. So the board doesn't, we don't need board approval and the board doesn't like, sort of come in and say, you, you do this program and buy this thing. We, we handle it for what programs we need to do. So you talk to her and she will, um, you know, figure out if it's something she thinks she can work in with her current displays and themes and things that she does and, uh, we'll go from there.
This is somewhat taking summer reading and doing it monthly more? I mean, doing it in smaller pieces.
I mean, we, it's, it's, I know that she has displays and so on that she does throughout the years, so, um, and she has her plan for, you know, what she works on with the kids at storytime and, and that kind of thing.
Hopefully we'll give her a few more Saturdays and there'll be more opportunities for some of these things to happen. I think we lost her again. Uh, okay, uh, moving forward, if anyone else has any thoughts in that regard, uh, don't necessarily leave it to Adriana. We could all perhaps give some thought to that going forward. You know, one of the things I find interesting is going into other libraries.
Oh, it's not the best.
Yeah. And I'm gonna throw something on the table a little bit later on, but that's kind of the preliminary. All right, moving on, uh, so we have outreach opportunities, programming and email addresses. And that again, Adriana, I think that was something that you had.
Yes, yes. So, uh, I think, I don't know, two months ago, you were talking about outreach opportunities and how you sent a lot of emails and no one has responded. Um, and I try to think about, you know, what, what kind of reason could there be? And then I thought of by my own email. I get so, I get inundated. I get so many emails, so much spam from all kinds of different coupons and stores that I've never been to. And my policy is to just block everything and not even read it. Don't open, just block, block spam, remove sender, just don't contact me ever again. Um, if we don't have emails where it says, you know, like, I don't know, like, library@dudley.com or anything that would make us look legitimate, then people would do the same thing to us.
So every library in Central Mass has our emails provided through our consortium. So the CWmars.org, like if you talk to people and you say, I'm, you know, D Carter at CW, and they're like Mars.org, they know that that is the library in this area. I mean, to me, like to say to add a Gmail account or something is less, I mean, to have a dot org account indicates that you're a nonprofit and, um, you know, I think some of the things when I'm not getting responses from emailing people, it's just that, you know, if I email people at the wrong time, they're inundated. But, you know, most of the time I do hear back. We, our patrons know that, you know, pearl@CWmars.org will get us and we get regular emails from patrons asking questions and so on on that one. Um, but all of the, all of the CW Mars library have the same CWmars.org, which indicates that we're part of that consortium.
So in the library world, people know about CW Mars, but what about?
And most of our patrons do because all of their, you know, all their cards say CW Mars. Um, all of the emails that they get saying, hi, your book has been renewed, um, are prefaced with CW Mars. Um, so our patrons are aware of the fact that we're part of a consortium.
But if we're trying to outreach and network with organizations.
Beyond the library.
Yeah, beyond that, like beyond patrons.
Well, like any of the, like Tri Valley, for example, knows what CWmars.org is. Most of the nonprofits do and, and having a dot org ending is something that they recognize.
Okay. Maybe I was mistaken. I was just trying to help out.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea. I'm glad you're bringing these things up because we need to, even if we think we know what we're doing, we always, you know, it's a good idea to go back and revisit that from time to time. I know one of the issues was we were trying to make contact with somebody at Nichols College.
Nichols College, yeah.
Yes, and they have not come back, they did not come back to classes and they did not come back on campus until today.
Today.
Um, so the fact that I have not heard from them is not surprising because they've been gone. Um, and so, um, I'm waiting until probably tomorrow.
We sent that email.
Yes, and I sent it, I sent it to an email address that I had had. I now have an updated one for someone, an individual to talk to, um, but I'm waiting to send that until tomorrow. So she's had time to clean out her email inbox from all of the stuff that has accumulated while they've been away for three or four weeks. Because I know how that works.
That's great. I, I confess, I've been on the campus the last couple of days and I didn't notice that there were any fewer people there than usual, so.
Yeah, I believe students, students came back to campus, I believe, on Saturday or Sunday, but classes did not start. So staff were not back in place until today.
All right.
If you go to Dip and Donuts, you know, when the students are back.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. The business increases tremendously. It's amazing. Uh, okay, moving along, we have Crawford Corner status and I will make mention of this. And specifically, we had a Zoom meeting, uh, that both Drusil and I participated with. And, uh, we had the Dudley's Town Attorney, uh, who identified what he believes to be some things that need revision with regards to the bid package and, uh.
So this is from Jonathan Ruda sent it to the.
Town Attorney.
And this is, okay.
KP Law, yes. And they, uh, the questions I kept asking and I found myself having to ask it more than once and I think I got a bit irritable at some point, was how long was this gonna take and how much was it gonna cost? And we finally got to something in the order of approximately five hours or so of his time and something in the order of $200 plus per hour.
Oh, the lawyer fees?
Oh, legal fees, yeah. Oh, they are cheap, obviously.
We've paid them before.
Well, um, his advice, as I understand it, and Drusil, you can correct me, was that the, before we go out to bid, we seriously should consider doing that. I asked him if we would.
Doing what?
Doing the revision, if you will, his revision of the bid package.
Uh, well, what's his, what, what, this is, what is he changing?
I don't know. And I don't think, he, he did not actually elaborate on that.
He only got through about two sections of it.
Right, didn't read the whole thing.
Before he sent an email to Michelle and John Ruda and said, I have some questions about this. And unfortunately, that email arrived to them in November and did not make it to me until last week. Um, so some of the questions, as I understand it, that he has, um, there are some sections when dealing with, you know, contractors and so on, that he feels are unclear. Um, that maybe the language could be interpreted more than one way. So he recommended that, um, that needed to go through and be, be edited and cleared up.
Who reviewed this before, who reviewed this before we sent it out?
That came from Studio MLA.
It came from StudioMLA, the, the, most of the specifications. The thing is that there is also, so there's the bid documents that, like the architect or in this case, StudioMLA does. There's also a front-end piece, which is the, this is how the bid process works and this is when bids should be submitted and so on. And, um, when I asked John Ruda for the boilerplate from the town, um, he told me essentially to make it up. Use, use the RFP that we'd had for the landscape architect and adapt it. The problem is that that's very, very simplistic and did not cover some of the things we need this bid process to cover. So I essentially was making it up.
The, the point came through that this was different than what we were using as the boilerplate, if you will. And quite frankly, MLA was getting an education in this as well.
They were present at the meeting?
They were present. They were on the Zoom. And I, I suspect at some point, we should tally this up and send them a bill for all the education we provided.
But most, most towns, having worked on construction projects in a number of towns, most towns have a very comprehensive set of sort of front-end documents that you fill in, you know, the name of the project and the dates. And it, it has all the legalese and Dudley does not. The, the boilerplate that they have is extremely simplistic and doesn't cover a situation like hiring a contracting firm. Most of the time when dealing with an architecture firm, like when, when the police or the fire station was built or when our building was built, the architects have access to AIA draft documents. We don't in this instance because we're dealing with landscape architects and not regular architects. So part of the issue is that now trying to.
So the town, did they put theirs out to bid already for their landscape?
No, cause they don't have the money yet. They're raising the money for it.
This is apparently a one-off. This is, uh, from what I get, this is something that the town has never come close to doing in the past.
The town has not done anything with a landscape project on this scale.
The mechanism, what we thought was in place, really is one that we're creating or we're building. We're making it up as we go along. And this is the next hooper-hurl, if you will.
So the lawyer is gonna send you his recommendation?
He's gonna revise the document.
To edit the, the documents, particularly the, the front-end stuff and what that needs to say. Um, including things like what happens if the contractor does something and we go, whoa, 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 that wasn't what you were supposed to do, kind of thing like that. All of that is normally in the sort of front end.
Can we sell this to the town afterwards?
I think we ought to sell it. I think we ought to sell it to MLA.
Let's make some money on this. We're doing some work.
A lot of this apparently is, it, it's defensive in nature or appears to be because we live in a very litigious world. Everybody's suing everybody. And I think the thrust of what he was getting at is if we didn't make these changes, as he's suggesting, and again, he hadn't completed his review. If we didn't make them, we might be liable for some sort of legal action in the future, which I suppose would make a thousand dollars look like.
Could cause some questions about liability if there was an issue in the future.
In the meantime, we're gonna miss all our opportunities. We're gonna be out of season by the time we get a document.
I, I confess, I probably put a monkey wrench in it because I asked that, uh, we'd make the board aware of this before we went any further with it and gave them any green light. But I would suggest that we do go forward with it. We're this close. Uh, can't be a whole lot left that we have to get past in terms of getting this out the door in the public.
Time is the problem here.
I understand.
And if something came in in November and we were unaware of it.
Well, unfortunately, we can't go back. We can only go forward. So if we.
Well, no one, no one notified the board. Is, is that what you're saying?
No, no one notified me. The email came, an email came in from the town, from the attorney saying, I need some clarification on this and.
Well, we didn't have a meeting either in December where we could have been like, oh, we need to check on that, Drusil.
We could have, but unfortunately, we wouldn't have had that information if had we.
I did actually check in more than once in December to see if we had heard from the attorney and was.
This only came to light what?
And they told you no.
They told, yes, I was told no, that there had been no progress. And then it was, um, last week that I was, oh, by the way.
Regardless of when we met, this was something that, this is the first opportunity we will have had to discuss this. So my thought again, and I've asked for the board's indulgence or pleasure to go give the attorney, if you will, the green light and to go forward with it.
To make the changes that the attorney is recommending to the thing.
Go sign, if you will, without advising the board of where, where we were. And as you've noted, how far behind we may be in terms of the process, but again, if we don't go forward.
Did he say when he could get us back this document?
He said it was probably three to five hours of his time, which I would guess a week or so.
When did you have your meeting with them?
Was it Wednesday, was it?
Wednesday.
Yeah. That was an exciting meeting.
So we have an estimate of a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Three to five hours, probably a week before we get a document back in our hands to start the process.
Well, I would ask that we, perhaps someone wants to offer a motion that we, uh, give the attorney the approval to go forward with this and assuming there are no other issues, that the next step is we get this out to bid.
And follow, yeah. Two, let's go two motions first.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we give the attorney the red, uh, the green light to revamp the document.
We have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, roll call. Ed?
Ed, aye.
Ed Bazanet, aye.
Ben Craver, yes.
Joyce Narzinski, yes.
Adriana Buda, aye.
Richard Clark, aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. So well, four.
Definitely. Thank you. My second would be that we do not wait for another meeting, that once this document comes back and maybe you and Drusil have a chance to look at it since you had the discussion with the attorney, that we go forward and send it out, like keep it moving.
Absolutely.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, roll call.
Ed Bazanet, aye.
Ben Craver, yes.
Joyce Narzinski, aye.
Adriana Buda, aye.
Richard Clark, aye, okay.
And I would just like the boat, board to be notified when these things happen and not have to wait till another meeting.
All right.
Yeah.
Yep, to keep us in the loop.
Okay, it, uh, this is all taking a little longer. It, it, you know, I, I, okay, this is gonna sound critical, but MLA has.
I have not been happy with MLA.
I, you know, I think our assumption was that these folks had a lot more experience with municipal organizations, libraries, nonprofits, if you will, and had something of a boilerplate that they could offer and could get us through these unknown waters more successfully and certainly a lot faster than we have. And I bet very dis.
We thought we were hiring the professionals.
Uh, they, believe me, as I said earlier, I think we at some point might want to tally something up and send them a bill for all the learning and knowledge that we've been able to provide them with. Because, I mean, the look of surprise and wonderment that you get, uh, in that Zoom meeting.
Every time we've had an issue, it's like, oh, no. It's like, oh.
And that's what we were hiring essentially, as I understood it, was the expertise.
Yes.
Uh, and I think that E is very low.
Yeah.
Crossed that one off. All right, uh, next we're moving on here. We may all making progress. Apparently we've had Kathy, we've lost Kathy. Apparently, we've had Kathy, we've lost Kathy, we had Kathy visually, and I don't know if we ever connected with the audio, but this has not worked as we had hoped, apparently. Director's evaluation process, and this was something that was raised, the question was raised by a board member, perhaps you want to speak to that? Joyce, did you get an email?
The new system of merit raise bases and raises within the town was that we reviewed the director's goals halfway through the year, and we did it last year. We reviewed her goals halfway through the year, so we're at the halfway point, so that...
Okay, there was not an attendance at that meeting, but did we do, what I've got, I did reach out to Mr. Ruda, wasn't able to meet with him, unfortunately, but I did get, this is through Drusilla's, actually, contacting him, information from him, and what he described as a process that is formally or informally, and it sounds like it's a good deal less than what you're proposing, which I think is an open meeting.
Well, it's what we did last year, she just went through and stated where she stood and where she was, her goals, if she had met them yet, or she was still working on that goal, how far, you know, would it be achieved by year end?
And that was at a meeting?
Yeah, that's all, she just reviewed her goals.
Well, my reading of this is, it does not require a meeting, but if the board's pleasure is that we should go through that process in a more formal way, then I guess we could entertain that. What I had understood from, what I'm getting from Mr. Ruda, is that it could have been something that I could have done with Drusilla, and I would have invited the vice chair along with me, something short of a formal reading, which would require us to publish an agenda and have that in place, obviously, 48 hours in advance. Would have to probably move that into our February meeting, unless we wanted a separate meeting for that, that alone. It would have to be a, I mean, if the open meeting would require it, I'm sorry?
It wasn't something that took long.
I don't recall that it was in a board meeting last year. I recall that it was Joyce and Pat and Ben came to the library. It wasn't, it wasn't actually a full board meeting.
It was presented to the board.
It was presented to them, but it wasn't a board meeting that, in which it took place.
I think we were in your, we were in your office.
I remember doing it at a meeting, that's what I remember, was going over at the meeting.
But no, it was, it was, like I said, it was...
I'd be agreeable to the two of you just sitting doing that.
Well, we all vote on her, we all do a thing at the end of the year.
Yes, we do.
So, I think it's beneficial for all of us to see where we stand at the half-year mark to the final.
All right, then, did someone want to make a motion with regards to either option, or do we have any further discussion?
I move that the chair and the vice chair meet with the director, and then if you have issues, you can come back and say, hey, we got to chat, but you know what we're, what we're looking at, and can do a cursory evaluation, in a sense, here's where it stands, or there's some issues, or there aren't, and I would trust your judgment on this.
Can I say something?
I'm sorry?
I said, can I say something?
Oh, you certainly can.
Um, I think having goals is a, is a, is a good thing. I'm a teacher, and we have goals, and we have reflections, and sometimes, even if you're not aware, you're making progress, and it's, it, having goals helps everyone. It doesn't have to sound like an evaluation, it doesn't have to be, you know, you get an A+ or a C-, it's just having goals and us knowing what the goals are. I think that's...
So, goals for the way the town works, our goals are set at the beginning of the fiscal year, so my goals were set in July. And this is just the, the way that department heads do it, is check in with each staff member and say, hey, these are your goals, anything we need to know, any reason you haven't, you're not going to be able to complete them, what have you. And it's not an evaluation at that point, it's just a note that's attached to their file that I sat down with them and said...
But being transparent and us knowing about those goals, I think...
I prefer, it happens at a meeting, that it's just your goals are presented and where you stand, and, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, I don't know, was that a motion that you made there?
Yes.
Okay, did we have a second for that, or is that going to fail for lack of a second?
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion, as I had seconded. Any further discussion? All right, roll call, vote.
Ed Bazanet, aye.
Ben Craver, aye.
Joyce Narzinski, no.
Adriana Buda, no.
Yeah, that's why I'm the decision.
You get the decision, man.
I will vote, Richard Clark, aye. So, it's a 3-2 majority then. And again, I do think that's somewhat in keeping with what I have from Mr. Ruda here, so, and he does say he's happy to discuss it further, and I do hope to have a following, a meeting with him sometime at his convenience, he was on vacation last week. Okay, moving forward. The board member comments and or observations.
I'm good.
Joyce?
I wanted to know where we stood, Drusilla, on outstanding grants that were applied for, have we heard back from all the grants that have been...
Yeah, we've received our, our Malzer grant.
Yep.
That came in, and Dudley Cultural Council, the ones that we applied for, we have received. And those are the only outstanding ones.
We didn't apply for the, the goods ones, that it was like $60,000, like...
Oh, yes, we did. We, we were informed that we were not a qualified agency, because the, the purpose for which those grants are given each year changes, and their focus this year is on recycling, or the, this grant cycle, which is, I guess, two or three years, is on recycling clothing and mattresses, which we are...
You know, I remember you bringing that up.
We are not capable of doing, so...
I just couldn't, I didn't remember, and I was like, oh, I don't remember about that.
Yeah, no, we, we were informed that we are not qualified, because the, whatever cycle, however many years it is, is focused on those items.
Yep.
Adriana, any?
Uh, I have a question about storytime. I know that we're going to have one later this month, on the 30th, later in the day at 6:00. Are there any others planned, or that's just the one?
She's trying to do programs in the afternoon, a couple of times a month. So, we've had, like, Sing and Swing was one afternoon, Lego Club is, of course, always in the afternoon, Pokemon Group is always in the afternoon, and she's trying to add in afternoon programming and storytime. Some of our drop-in crafts are, are now in the afternoons.
When it comes to storytime, what are the obstacles? Was it something that she needs, or...
Part of it is just time. I mean, she already does two storytimes a week, plus all of the other programming, and finding the time to prep for another one, you know, it's just one person on top of everything else she does, but so she's trying to add them in, and...
Is she the only one who can do storytime?
Yes, that is, that is her, that is her job description, and that is not anyone else's.
And it's not allowed? Someone else can read a book?
There isn't, I mean, there isn't anyone else who, well, we certainly do much more than just reading a book in storytime, but there isn't anyone else on the staff with that skillset or the interest to do it.
So, if we have a new hire coming on, is that something that they could assist her with, maybe?
I can, I can ask. That was, that was not something that was discussed in her meeting, but I can, in interviews...
Well, I would think that's part of the staff, they help her out.
I can, I can ask, but, you know, Lita is the one with the expertise in doing storytime, and, and, you know, she loves doing storytime, and so she's been trying very hard to add afternoon events and programs, and unfortunately, have not had much attendance to date, so...
Maybe someone else can do the crafts, because I think, to a certain degree, is like, help yourself type of situation. Kids just come in and they start working, they don't need that much assistance.
Well, for the drop-in crafts, yes, although she is usually there, but she, you know, still has to put everything together.
Yeah, so, this is what I'm saying, maybe someone else can do that, because you don't need a certain skill, you just have to put everything together for craft, and then maybe she can focus on storytime or other activities where you need more skills.
I mean, I can look at it as a possibility.
Can we post something, perhaps, and I'm not sure whether there's any requirement in terms of qualifications, but just a volunteer who would like to assist with Story Hour, please, you know, raise your hand, we could put it out to the friends, put it out to the patrons, obviously, and members of the staff, you know, maybe we can get somebody there who'd like to expand their horizons, as opposed to sitting behind that desk and watching a bunch of old folks go by.
Well, most of, most of them have, have other projects that they do that they're very happy with, and I do know that a couple of them prefer not to assist with, with things like that, when things have come up.
Well, there are other projects involved here?
No, well, yes, of course, every staff member has projects. There's cataloging, there's newsletters that could put out, there's DVD ordering, there's processing magazines, there's all of the displays that happen.
Maybe that's getting too much in...
You all thought you did all the ordering.
I order, I order all of the print materials, but when I came, Lena had been given the task of ordering DVDs when Karen was absent, and I asked each of the staff if they wanted to keep the projects that they had been, had given to them when Karen left, and she asked to keep that, so she does.
All right. So, we have a couple of relatively new people. Were they assigned tasks, or are those things that they elected to do?
Courtney, no, each of them was, was given a couple of options of things that they want to do. Courtney is learning how to catalog, which is helping significantly, because we have a lot of books that come in, so she's learning how to do that.
Do you think we're getting too much into the weeds if we were to ask, you know, what the breakdown was in some of the projects that people were working on?
I guess it's nice to know.
Yeah, and, and opportunity for some cross-training, too, I mean, some people got opportunity to do, own new skills, or acquire new skills, or have opportunity to expand their horizons. I know, I know, basically, we're talking about part-timers, but still...
Susan handles the museum pass program, she has to take that on, so she handles all of the museum pass ordering and making sure what's up to date and so on. She also handles all of the monthly displays in the adult department of all the different assorted media types. She also works with the adult book group to make sure that their selection is in every month and that their brochure is up to date. Ann does a large percentage of our adult cataloging, which takes quite a bit of time. Lena does the monthly newsletter and also does DVD ordering. Courtney is learning to catalog children's materials, which, again, there's an awful lot of those, so, so they take things on. And Dawn has taken it upon herself to assist, since the Friends have the ongoing book sale, and we had had one of the Friends who was able to come in regularly and, and keep that stocked and refreshed, and unfortunately, that person has not been able to do that in some times, so Dawn has taken it upon herself to kind of manage that and keep that updated, which is great, because the Friends are bringing in several hundred dollars a month in, in book sales. So, everyone has their project, and then, of course, assists on, you know, other special projects as they come in.
Can we present the opportunity, and maybe if someone wants to do it, great?
I mean, as I said, I can look into the possibility.
Especially, like, the one that's handling the museum passes, it sounds like she could do more, right?
No, she's pretty busy.
Really?
Museum passes and displays and the adult book group.
Or maybe just the new person.
No, she's, she's pretty busy.
Well, we have a new person coming on, so hopefully, we have some opportunities, maybe freeing up the current number of employees for some opportunities that they could expand, you know, move on to other things.
One more question.
How do we feel about volunteers? What if someone wants to volunteer to do that?
It's very easy, all, they have to come in, and we have several, we have quite a few volunteers, actually. They need to come in and fill out an application form, and then they need to have a query check completed by the town.
Okay.
Thank you.
The town will pay for the query check.
They haven't asked me to pay for one yet, so shh.
Okay, all right, lots of work, thank you. All right.
Don't, don't bring that up, Richard.
All right. I didn't say anything.
It depends on, you know, where, where we can use someone, and what their skills and abilities are, and there are some things that we cannot have volunteers help with because of privacy reasons, you know, circulation, checking books in and out, we can't have a volunteer do that, but we do have our regular volunteers who come in and, and help shelve things in the morning, and we have several high school kids who help in the children's department.
But prep work, even for Story Hour, that might, a volunteer could...
Yeah, sure. I, I mean, I've seen, especially during campaigns, political campaigns, you've had, I think I, not long ago, saw Senator Fatman actually reading at the Sutton Library, and I'm not sure if he filled out an application or not, but apparently, he was accepted and volunteering. Further questions or comments? No?
That's it for today.
That's it for today? Oh, no, don't stop, don't stop, keep them going.
I'm fine.
Fine?
Ben? I'm good.
Okay, I gave you a little preview of something earlier. I found myself in the Southbridge Library not that long ago, last week, in fact, and they have available to patrons coffee. And I brought this up some years ago, and it died at ungodly death. The director at the time, and I don't think that was you, Drusilla, was not in shape with that at all.
Ben's shaking his head.
I spoke to...
He knows all about, he remembers this.
I spoke to librarian there, and she indicated that it was a project that had been undertaken by the Friends. They, and she quite proudly displayed a whole host of these carrying boxes, those little coffee things, and they have a mechanism by which water is available below the table, you have to look down there to find it. They charge a dollar a cup, and according to her, I had asked questions, you know, do you have problems, people spilling these on computers, so on and so forth? She said that there weren't any problems that she was aware of. Now, I didn't get her name, but she was a member of the staff, at least appeared to be, and very knowledgeable in terms of how this was working, and apparently was a good fundraiser for the Friends. They didn't have to be there, didn't have to really do anything, she assisted me because I didn't know the mechanics involved, but, and she happily took my dollar, and it worked.
They're allowed beverages in the library in Southbridge? Because I don't think we do, do we?
We don't.
No, we don't, and I turn a blind eye, but I don't allow them at the computers, you know, like, we have people who come in with their kids, and they've got a water ball or something, but I don't allow anything near the computers.
Trying to use two sentences at once, you know, books and coffee, it kind of goes together like pizza and beer, you know, there's a good symmetry there. And, you know, the fact that it is a bit of a fundraiser as well, and it's one that obviously that is available at all times, so it's not restricted to a book sale or bobbles and bangle sale, if you will, at a separate one-in-one off occasion.
They might spill something on our fabulous carpet.
Well, the fabulous carpet is not there any longer.
Probably not.
Trust me, this started in the design process, when we were designing the library, to make a little area just for this, and have the correct flooring, and the correct this, and the correct, and it was next.
There's a picture of what they've got, so it's a real deal thing, and they had the options, apparently, there's featured flavors of the month.
I've seen it, I was over there.
Yeah.
I was also impressed with their background stuff on the French population and whatever, you know, I said, wow, they got stuff here, we could...
There's a theme. No, I, I, we did have, I forget the gentleman's name, George, first name, running the, one of the Friends did the genealogy program.
Martin.
Martin, George, yeah. And that was one of the topics at one point, and I don't, I'm afraid he's not as involved as he was.
No, he has stepped, he does not do the genealogy, the genealogy group has essentially disbanded, and I do try to provide periodic programs on it, but they do not meet regularly anymore.
If there was some way we could do that...
And he has, he's had to step way back from volunteering as well because of health issues.
I'm sorry, I kind of got us, we got us a little off track there, but this seems to have worked fairly well, from what I understand, and then maybe if you wanted to talk to someone in Southbridge, you could maybe ask them how, what their experience, this person may have been someone who's never had any issues with it, but everyone else has, I'm been someone who's never had any issues with it, but everyone else has, I'm not sure of that, but, I don't know, I'm just kind of thinking that the thought might be out there for a possibility.
I think it's a nice thought, I just think that you're adding a job to someone on the staff, that, you know, and then the cleanup.
Yeah, that's what worries me, is the cleanup of cleaning, keeping the cure clean.
Someone spills coffee at a table where they're sitting there reading a book, then, you know, we don't have a custodian on staff all the time when the library's open.
That aroma, and I'm going, is this Duncan, or is this Dippin', what am I getting?
Well, the thought might be, we restrict it in terms of, if you're using a computer, you cannot have a beverage, you know, here.
Yeah, to a certain area.
Well, I like the idea of a cover, too, you could have a cover.
Covers, I think, I believe they have covers available, they do show them in the picture.
I, I think it's a marvelous idea, I think so many people go to Starbucks just to use the internet and drink coffee, they don't actually really buy, you know, the cookies and the muffins, or whatever, and if we have the internet and we have the coffee, it's probably that more people will come in.
And possibly stay longer, which means they might involve themselves in more things, if you will, if they find themselves a longer staying.
The line won't be as long.
The what?
The line won't be as long as Dippin's.
Maybe tea as well, some people don't drink coffee.
Our water usage will go up in the johns, so, there you go.
Ah, well, okay.
I like the idea very much.
So, so, all right, so you're bringing up, I had no more comments, but I have another one, you'll be sorry you brought that up, um, the Friends in the past, and I don't know if, I don't know if it was prior to you, whatever, did they sell mugs, like the town at Dudley, or blankets?
Yeah, long, long before.
Bags, blankets, mugs, sweatshirts, you've seen me with my sweatshirt on.
I've had people ask me about it, like, are they gonna do that again, and I'm like, oh, but it could be a fundraiser.
They're looking at tote bags right now, they're, they're discussing...
They're looking at what?
Tote bags, but the good, like, heavy-duty canvas ones.
Who's the market tote bags?
Um, well, these would be more like the, the L O V E and canvas bags.
L O V E canvas.
Yeah, um, so they're, they've talked about that in their last meeting.
Yeah, because I, I think that would be, some, people have asked me, and I'm like, you know, I remember, maybe it's time to, like, do that again.
Do it again, time for something.
Yeah, to do it again, it's been a while, yeah.
Well, okay, we've, we've left the coffee thing behind us again.
I love coffee.
I wasn't pushing coffee.
I will bring that up again, all I, all I would...
Buy a mug, and it's five dollars a cup.
Well, no, no, we could, we could make some kind of an offer.
Buy a mug, and you get a free cup of coffee.
There you go, all right.
I would ask Drusilla if you would, to maybe check with the folks in Southbridge to see if it has gone as well as this person seemed to indicate.
I have enough to call Margaret.
And I suspect there are probably other libraries that do have some, limited access to...
I mean, when we built this library, there were concepts put out there for everything from that simple little thing to a little cafe.
What happened to it?
Oh, it was nixed by the committee.
By who?
The ma, the committee as a whole, decided they did not want to get into this in the library, and, you know, because, I mean, flooring should have been a little different in some places, you know.
Right, I don't know that staff is gonna go for it.
Yeah, it gets to be tedious, and individual tastes, really tastes, come in, play.
You know, it's, it's what, what worries me is the, first of all, the potential for someone dropping their cup of coffee on our beautiful carpet, and secondly, the, you know, those machines need to be cleaned regularly, and so it would be one more.
Well, I, as I understand it, again, this was, it's described as the library cafe, coffee, tea, and cocoa were available, this was the Friends, the, the displayed items had covers on them, it seemed to have minimum involvement in terms of the staff, but again, maybe we could find out what the true mechanics are with regards to Southbridge, and I, all I can say in closing is that I will bring this up again.
Well, I have a note to talk to the Friends about it, but, you know, bear in mind that our Friends are very small, unlike Southbridge.
Yeah, we need to gin that up as much as we can, I think.
So their, their volunteer pool is very limited, and several of them are already in the library, you know, weekly, if not better.
Along that line, just going back to our bylaws, if you will, it says in Officers' Article Two, Section Two One, the chair shall at least annually request a report of activities and plans for any of the library support groups.
Yes, I brought that up, too.
Did we, we have anything in the works in that regard, is there someone there that we could get some kind of a report or update from?
Um, I mean, I can ask Jeannie, she's the, the president.
And how do we, I mean, these, these people obviously come in, put themselves forward as Friends, do we have any way of increasing the number, you know, be a friend of the library and get a tote bag, or something like that?
I mean, that's, that's the Friends to do, like, that's, you know, they, they have had this discussion, but that's, that's, you know, that's the Friends' job to do, is to, to come up with.
I mean, I think their biggest thing is get to come into the book sale a day early, and that usually gets a few more members, because I want to get in that door before everybody else.
I should say, the Friends does have quite a few members.
Yes.
It's the active members that is a different story.
Well, here's the thought, let's, you know, invite them, if they want to come to one of our meetings, we'd be happy to have them, and the staff, you know, obviously, we're not, we got a number of empty seats here, we don't have any problem with capacity, you know, I...
I just wonder about helping brainstorm with them, how do we get, how can we help them, because they do so much helping us, how can we help them build and brainstorm, how can we build and...
One of the first thoughts would be to engage with them, and to have them, if they, you know, an open invitation to the staff as well, in terms of any thoughts that they may have, I mean, we don't know what answers to everything.
Well, their meetings are open, we can go to their meetings.
Yeah, their meetings are totally open.
Their meetings are open, we can go to their meetings.
When are their meetings?
Second Monday of every month at two o'clock.
Yeah, that's why we can't go to those meetings.
Except for June, June and September.
He can, he can.
June, June and September, their meetings are at six, on the second Monday.
Okay, could you send us a, a date in terms of the next meeting, and where do they meet, in the fellow room?
In the local history room.
Yes, okay, yeah, that would be good. I don't think they know who we are, I'm not sure, and I don't think these meetings get a lot of TV viewers, frankly, and I suspect that we are just a bunch of names on the website, if anything, of these folks, we should, we need to have some of that up, up close.
I know a lot of them, because we're all geezers, you know, we're in our own, I think, I think there are a couple of us that are pretty close to geezerhood.
This side, this side of the table, except for Drusilla.
Any other, any other comments or observations before we go on to the next item? Okay, thankfully, no.
Moving along.
You're reading dates for 2023, actually, I think in our minutes, Drusilla, you were gonna try to put a calendar together for us, as I recall.
Um, yeah, it's just the fourth, fourth Tuesday, and I didn't print that out, but fourth Tuesday of every month, so...
So our next scheduled meeting, if I may, or...
February twenty eighth.
Oh, the last day of February.
I think you gave it to us, because I put it in my...
I was gonna say, I...
Well, you gave it to us, because, yeah, I've got it on mine.
Yes.
Oh, I sent it on mine, or something? I don't know.
It was done in June.
Yeah, like, I did the year, I did the year's fiscal, well, yeah, the fiscal...
Well, we had changed the date, obviously, we didn't meet December, we changed this one, and I think we were, what we had is a calendar that was twenty-two to twenty-three, we're asking for a calendar twenty-three going up.
Well, we go to June.
We go to June.
June, and then we reorganize, and we go from there, because I don't have anything in August.
Okay, so we'll just continue on, with the twenty-eighth of February is the next meeting, and...
Yes.
Are you looking to change the day, Richard?
No, I'm just going by what I see here, in terms of our, the minutes that we had presented, if I may, and I will have to find a specific citation here, uh, okay, the board would like the next meeting, January seventeenth, Ms. Clark will check with D. Cheryl Jarvis to make sure it's a likely meeting, okay, that's not it.
Yep, yep.
I think all we did was change our November, December meeting.
Which we kind of do, I guess.
And this meeting was because of the December meeting.
Then, back to our agenda, then, if there's no other business to discuss, then... Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, okay, roll call.
Ed Bazin, aye, remember your name, will you? Ben Craver, yes.
Joyce Narzinski, yes.
Adriana Buda, yes.
Richard Clark, aye, okay, moving on.